...
I put a meeting to the United States of America, which is a republic, which stands one nation under the Capitol with no intention of destroying it.
Thank you, sir. Since this is a planning commission meeting, first, we don't have the Director Harrington with us tonight.
I'm on virtually.
Oh, okay. Okay, so the first thing we'll cover are the minutes from the planning commission meeting for September 6th. Any commissioners have comments on that, or are we ready to move to a motion? Ready to move to a motion? So do I hear a motion?
Let me accept the minutes and move on to the next agenda.
All right. Is there a second? John or Tracy?
A second.
Okay, so the motion is...
Yes, the morning for the 1100.
Can we mute the... Kelly, can we mute the online folks until they're ready to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the Councilman Sampson made a motion to accept. It was seconded by Tracy. All in favor? John, are you in favor?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
I did not think she was going to be online. Commissioner Banks, are you online? Kelly, can you tell us if she is?
Mr. Chair, I do not see her online.
Okay. And Councilwoman Bryant Ward, yea or nay on the minutes? Yea. And I do. So they pass unanimously. Minutes are approved from the previous meeting. So as we wait for Jamie Kendrick, can we go out of order here and talk about the Planning Department report? Move to Director Harrington?
Yes, we absolutely can. Good evening, Planning Commission members and council members. So for the Planning Department updates, I know the council will be familiar with these since it was mostly what I presented at the monthly business meeting. Let me just pull this up here. So for monthly statistics, we had two new major site plan applications, two stormwater management applications, and two zoning confirmation letters. I did some development updates on Pine Grove, formerly Heritage Green, just noting their progress, that we have issued their entrance sign permit, and building permits are starting to be approved for Neighborhood K. La Plata Parkway pavement from Charles Street has been installed, up to, close to where Neighborhood K is, it's not all the way in yet. Mass grading plans for parcel Q and A have been approved, and the commercial plans are under development for parcel P. We've seen a concept, but no official submissions at this point. Moving forward to Planning Department priorities, town code revisions are starting to become clearly evident that we need to move forward with these. So my number one priority is the adequate public facilities ordinance. I'll be revising that draft and sending that back for legal review before proceeding with the Planning Commission. We're also still working through the Planning Commission Rules and Procedures, Annexation Procedures Handbook, the MUNISITY software implementation for our development review and permit system, working on a development capacity analysis, and working on our school seat allocation policy review in coordination with Charles County Government and the Board of Education. And so that's the updates that I have, unless anyone has any specific questions for me.
Mayor has a question?
I do. Director Harrington, how many permits did you say have been issued for Pine Grove or have been requested right now?
So I know that we had 12 the last time I checked, and I think we received four more as of this morning.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments for Director Harrington? Not hearing any. How about a council report from Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Good afternoon, Chairman Gann. Actually, I don't have a report for you. Basically, everything that's come before us has come before you. We did have a public hearing last week on Stage, not Stage, people chase Phase Three. Had two speakers to speak. They were very, I thought they did a great job of, you know, sticking with the issues and not, you know, attacking and being, I thought they did a great job and subsequently followed up with one of the residents to talk about some things. And so we'll see how we move forward.
And the council approved?
We did. We did approve, and we approved it without conditions.
Okay. So the only thing left on the agenda is our main topic, and we're waiting for Mr. Kendrick to arrive. But we do have two guests, Mr. Reimer and Counselor Greer, right? Yeah. So I guess we can just take a pause in the meeting until Mr. Kendricks arrives?
I can give you a bit of an update on transportation. We did meet with Deputy Secretary Powell in their annual tour, and La Plata was granted $11.4 million for improvements from 301 to Willow Street on Route 6. That will be part, and I'm sure that Jamie will probably cover it a little bit more, but that will be part for bike paths and moving that area forward. So a lot of good things are happening on, we also found out that we will be getting a stoplight at 488 and Radio Station Road. That should, construction should start in March and be finished before the school year begins of next year. Many were hoping for a roundabout there, but I think that this is the first step in doing something. And I know Delegate Patterson was very instrumental in moving that forward. So that's some good news on that one, and...
On, if I may ask a question on that one. Would that be a light that's functional all the time or only during in and out of school time?
I think it's going to be functional all the time, which could, it's going to be interesting, since I live on the other side of that one. And we get backed up a little bit when school is in session. So maybe this will facilitate a better flow on there, but I know when my kids were going to the high school there, as soon as they got out of the subdivision, they were pretty much in traffic until they turned on the radio station, depending on how late they were getting to school. So that will be interesting to see how that works out. I think that's a first step. I'm hoping that it is very successful, but if not, there is always been a talk about having a roundabout there. And that might work. And then the other thing is that Jamie might mention it in here, too, is that we did receive funding, Brent, I think it was $384,000 for Radio Station Road Bike Path to connect to Charles Street, and it's going to interconnect all the way down to three notches, and they've been working on that. So it was a wonderful meeting with the Deputy Secretary, and we finally, I guess after years and years of being persistent, they actually awarded us some money. So that was a good day for us.
So Councilman Jenkins, you have a question?
Well, I just wanted, I guess I had a common observation about the 488 Radio Station Road light. I was so much surprised that all of a sudden they're going to put a light there. Because I listened to that presentation, and it was like, I could tell the room was going to gas, which is when the district engineer said that. It's like, and what concerned me about that, very frankly, is that, and I hope I'm out of term, but I'm going to say it anyway, they don't seem to really talk to us. They just kind of, oh, we're going to do this, and by the way, you may not have any say. And again, I just, and we can talk about later when Jamie gets here. And at one time, the roundabout there was in the county CIP.
Oh.
I talked to one of the planners at the County Planning Group, but I don't know if it's still in now, but one, he told me it's been in and out. Jason Roth is who I talked to. So it's been in and out, and so I don't know whether it's too late, but speaking for me, I would certainly would like us to talk to the state administration and see if that's possible. Because a roundabout is much, I think, a much, it's a better design, it's a more pleasing design, and it's like a gateway into La Plata. The other issue is in the county's priority letter, they did mention, and I forget the exact language that was issued in April, there was some language about a signal crossing of some study at the interest of King's Grant, because we have that issue of pedestrian, people crossing and going to the path that goes to Lake Tillman. Because I've ridden my bike through there on weekends, and it's frankly pretty hairy getting across there. And I think, and I did see people actually using that pathway. So I think it's been highlighted by State Highway, and I think Councilman Schrauber may know more about than I do, but I just...
They did do, they did do a study last, within the last three years about that. They sat there all day long and found that there wasn't enough traffic on that day of people crossing. So they have not moved forward with that request of painting a crosswalk right there. And to me, that's a traffic calming method, once you put that up there and put a sign, but they did not think that it warranted that. So unfortunately, when, and I use it all the time, when you're crossing there, you just have to make sure that you make eye contact with anything coming either way. Because they come over that, it's just a little hill coming westbound. It's just a little hill there that if someone's going quickly, that could be disastrous.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mud is requesting the floor.
What's wrong?
Mr. Mud is requesting the floor.
Your meeting.
Commissioner Mud, you have the floor.
All right, thanks. Just a quickie, I noticed that Jason Groth is virtually connected tonight. I know Dave Jenkins mentioned his name earlier, so if he's available, obviously, he could join in if that's appropriate. Just didn't want to miss that opportunity for the board and the council.
And if I may, this is Director Harrington. We did invite the state and the county to participate in the meeting tonight. The state was not available to participate, but we have had a couple of conversations with them. And yes, Ben Yekley and Jason Groth are on the call. I told them that really Jamie was doing the presentation tonight, and that if they could be available for questions or providing responses, that would be great. So hopefully, they can provide some input for you as well.
Okay, so I need some clarification. Who does Jamie work for?
Beat Hunt. He's our traffic consultant.
Yes, he's our traffic consultant, so he's technically working for the town.
Monk and Hunt.
Okay. He's coming?
Mm-hmm.
He's running late. Yeah. Okay.
And I see Jason is on, if you have any questions for him right now.
Jason Groth is on.
Hi, Jason.
I'm sorry. Hello.
This is Man James. How are you?
Doing well. Thanks for having me this evening.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add from the meeting that we were at with Secretary, Deputy Secretary Powell? I thought it was a very productive meeting.
It was. It was indeed. And congratulations on the award of the 11-plus million dollars for bicycle and pedestrian improvements on Route 6. That's great. Just to, I guess, add on to what Councilmember Jenkins mentioned in terms of the roundabout, I do believe the project is still in our capital program. I was trying to look it up really quickly, but it's more or less, for lack of a better description, a legacy project. It's been around a while. And the challenge that we found in doing the project was, we had originally planned a signal at that location, and with some possible relocation of the intersection itself to give some more space and capacity at that location. Because as you know, as I'm sure you're familiar with, it's a tight turn where a radio station ties into 488. And the state has some jurisdiction here, mainly because 488 is a state road. Anything with a number is a state road. So short end of the story is basically that the project exceeded our budget when the state told us that they would like a roundabout at that location. So I kind of chuckle at the, the state has agreed to put in the traffic signal, because originally, we had envisioned a traffic signal at that location, but the staff at the time said that they only wanted to see a roundabout at that location. Roundabout is considerably more expensive than a traffic signal, because it's very land consumptive, it's a lot more construction and material and that sort of thing. You introduce stormwater management and so on and so forth. So just to sort of round out the conversation, it's great that they're proposing some traffic control there in the form of a signal at this point. We can certainly continue to work with the town if you wish to pursue a roundabout at that location. I will say that one of the adjacent property owners went through the process of being granted a special exception from our Board of Appeals to be able to have a cemetery at the property that's sort of the wedge between 488 and Radio Station Road. To my knowledge, I don't believe that that use has been initiated, but they do have approval for that use, and it's still an active approval as of right now. So that, the point in that is that should there be any activity there, that makes it more complicated, and it also makes it more expensive to purchase the property, because the use is more than just sort of an inactive property. So anyway, that's the, sort of the summary of where things are with that intersection.
Jason, I have a quick question for you. That property that, to my knowledge, the previous owner had the exception for the cemetery, and then I believe the owner of the Charles Surrey went and bought that. Does that, because the exception was with the previous owner, does that move forward with the new owner as well?
I believe it runs with the land. I'm certainly not as familiar with the zoning indenture, or not the zoning indenture, the documents that codified that use approval. I know that that use approval had sort of a time limit on it. They did come in for a renewal of it several years ago, and I believe that time is still active. However, if someone else purchased it, and they aren't, if for some reason they're not interested in continuing that use, it will ultimately expire, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
That these are properties in the county, correct?
It is. It has not been extended yet.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you, Chairman Gann. Director Harrington, I thought for some reason that Pine Grove had roundabouts in their preliminary plat plans.
They do have one roundabout that I'm aware of off the top of my head in the center of the property. That will be where the actual 110-acre park is located.
Okay.
If that's still on the, I don't think I have that on that tracking sheet.
I thought it was more than one for some reason.
Let me pull up the plan. Is it your turn? It is your turn.
There's no rest for the weary. Come on.
I apologize.
No problem. We understand.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, you are, she is correct about the roundabouts. There are a couple that are proposed throughout the development.
Two?
Two, from what I see on the master site development plan.
That's what I recall.
Thank you.
So we're at that point on the agenda where we're going to have a transportation update by Jamie Kendrick, Mead and Hunt. Welcome aboard, sir. Do you need a respite first, or are you just ready to go?
No, I've held you long enough. Appreciate being here. And I cannot see who's online. I believe there are some...
Commissioner Mud is online.
Are there transportation colleagues? Anybody on your stage?
Jason Roth from the county.
Jamie, I got an email from Michelle Verkas stating that no one from MDOT would be available tonight.
Well, thank you for having me. We've been very pleased to be your traffic engineer, transportation planner for the past couple of years now. And we've been working on a number of specific projects that staff thought was important. We updated one, but as we've been doing with the projects, but it was also important to talk through some issues that are recurring and policy directions you all might want to think about. So I'm just going to dive in, and what I've tried to do, I tried to do, is, there we go, I think you can tell it's actually moving its magnitude, is to do this in the context of the comp plan. I mean, I could go on for days about issues generally, but these were the four things in the comp plan that you said were important to you. Five, four and a half, really, are transportation. Walkability, supporting roads without any facilities, strategic, proactive connections to support community development. This was a lot about the town-centered project, regionally significant transportation investments, and managing the supply of parking, and a little bit new offering of parking. So we're going to focus on three of those this evening. And the lay of the plan just is about maybe five minutes, seven minutes for me on each topic, and see if any of the county or states represented would wish to comment, and then obviously, open discussion as we go through there. So let's see. So the whole 16 is about walkability, continue to make walk, La Plata a very walkable community. Raises, and what I'm going to do is give a status report on each element of the comp plan as we go. Washington Avenue, St. Mary's Avenue, Kenton Oak Streets for sidewalk projects. And I do know that the county has about 75,000 or so in its capital program to be initiating feasibility study on Washington Avenue sidewalks. I've got a slide about that in a minute or so. There is pedestrian crossing issues across 301. We see the, what we call goat paths along, and then seeing people running across to get there. That's, that I think is frankly, an incredibly tricky issue to deal with, and I'm not sure that there's a good practical solution at the end of the day, but it's something we shall always be striving for. There's some issues along Maryland 6 that are going to get talked about in a moment, that more sidewalk and other projects. So let's just go into some of these. The first is the acre investment you all made, which has been side path for, where you, out suits Laurel Green, the Green Hill Park. We, as you recall, you've got a grant from MDOT last year in the amount of $330,000 that you all matched with another $100,000 change to move this project forward. We are in the design process for that. We have, like many other firms, hit some snags with subconsultants along the way, getting smaller firms out there to do geo check right away has been difficult, but we find we've gotten those hurdles overcome. So I'd say we're about a month behind schedule, but making it up in other ways. We are aiming to have a 60% design submittal to the town and counting S H A by plus or minus the first of November. I'm gearing up for a final submittal and grant application to be constructed by the May to June deadline, as it said, it's typically somewhere between the 15th of May and the border of it. We are on target to meet that submittal. We think in total, the prices have come down a little bit. We got a design waiver from the state to allow us to use the existing path along Agucopia rather than widening, which is otherwise a fairly functional path there. And we've got a couple of other elements that didn't need to be as intense as they initially had planned out. So we think that cost has come down a little bit, maybe given supply prices, it may be end up being the same as we initially forecasted, but we're on target. And then you all can make a decision about whether you want to go for the MDOT bikeways grant, which is up to 80%, typically of using state funds, which is a much less cumbersome process, or go for a federal transportation alternatives program grant, which is also controlled by the state, which is typically a 50-50 match and often used for slightly larger projects. This one, it's a toss-up in my mind about what to do, unless time is your consideration, because that will just take pain a little longer to spend. And so we'll probably want to revisit that issue with you in the late winter or early spring. But we're on target to be able to apply any of those programs that come to the deadline next year. Charles Street, Flashing Beacons, I know my favorite topic of the mayor. MDOT is not here, so, or S H A is not here, so I think I can speak on pretty good. We wrestled this project to the ground about, what, a year and a half ago there? And S H A was going to design and construct Flashing Beacons at a point to be determined to type, the town. And so it's kind of said, you know what, we will give you the design, and you build it. And so we submitted the final design package in, I want to say, it was July or August. Two of them, they came back and said, well, we want to adjust this right away, they want to adjust this box. Now, mind you, when we're talking right-of-way adjustments, we're talking about things no larger than the size of this podium. So that cost us a couple of months, and actually, the theater is up the hook in terms of its donations, right of way. The state also, one of the property owners who were donating their property to provide a certificate of, an attorney's letter saying that the title will spring in clear. And I said, let me get this right, you're asking, you know, small businesses who are giving you this property to spend $800,000 to $1,000,000 to give you, we're not going to do that. I thought this a couple of weeks, but we think that's in the moving case. So we do think at this point, you know, spring of 2023 is a reasonable deadline, and probably improve you all, improve others to the first step along the way. But it's, if they have, the excuse of, we don't have ready yet is no longer available. Washington Avenue sidewalks, I mentioned this a minute ago, and I know that friends have been in conversations with county planning staff, that the county would like to see a partnership. This is their own by and large, and it is your town, and the county is showing you the ability to get this done. The, I think the biggest challenge here is going to be right-of-way. So south of Hawthorne, it ends on 30-foot right-of-way, and so you see the poles right up against the, right up against the road, you know, in some cases, those slopes, over tanning walls. So we're going to have to figure, that's going to be the hardest piece to figure out, is how we do this without impacting, we're going to impact private property if we want to do this. That's just how we do it in the most, you know, the least impactful way. So we provided, and then, once you ignore the Hawthorne, it goes to 50 feet, and you have a couple of little stream and drainage issues, but those are, you know, less painful, I think, than the sound ones. We provided a scope to the town county today, and I think they're going to do that over the next couple of weeks, and if they're so inclined, they're going to get that started by the first of the year. by the first of the year. That's that. But I think, and not just to the county, but they do really see this as, as a partnership. It will become a relatively speaking expensive project, set aside who cares for it. There will be process things that need to get moved through like right of way, et cetera, that you just need to get to move through the process. If we can handle that better, more timely, et cetera, it will become the bigger issues. Okay, so that's walkability. I mean, we want to pause there and talk about other walkability kinds of private owners. Actually, Jason or somebody else from the county is on the line wants to say anything, I don't think the commission will mind.
Good evening again, council members and the planning commission. My name is Jason Groth. I'm the deputy director for Charles County Planning and Growth Management. Just a couple of quick comments. Jamie's presentation is on the money in terms of the active projects and projects that we can partner with you guys on. Essentially, the challenges, especially for the one on the screen, Washington Avenue, are laid out pretty well. The limited right of way, the utilities, private property acquisition, stormwater management, all of those are uphill challenges, but one that I think we can look forward to, I guess, overcoming. In essence, what we need to figure out is where a hiker biker facility or sidewalks are most appropriate. And essentially kicking off such a capital project in the form of a feasibility study is probably the first step. We do have some funding there, as you can see. We welcome many additional funding with, from our partners to be able to accomplish the goal. But essentially, we need to determine what the design would be. Is it going to be a facility on both sides? One side? Is it going to be a sidewalk? Is it going to be a shared use path? And, and what comes with it in terms of making that happen? In essence, the character of Washington Avenue does change through the quarter, as mentioned, not just in right of way, but also in the type of development and the character of the surrounding area. You know, we have newer development to the north, at least north of, once you get in the vicinity of Shining Will Way on north, the properties or the homes are set further back off the roads. You have a little bit more area to work with and the utilities are a little less challenging. And new development is coming. So as that occurs, where we are as the county and the owner of the road, we're trying to work with those projects to set down the footprint for what could ultimately be built there. So that's sort of the basic gist. We are happy to provide any feedback that you're, you're looking for. But in essence, I think your presentation hit all the key points.
Commissioner Samson, you had a question?
Yes, I was just wondering, and I know this is a ways down the road, but do the private owners along Washington Avenue have any ability or recourse to stay in action that impacts their property?
So when it comes to property acquisition, at least in terms of how the county administers property acquisition, we always approach the property owners from the earlier stages. Once we have somewhat of a design formulated, we try to negotiate a purchase of the property in terms of what's needed. We try to remain flexible. We rarely use eminent domain and condemnation of the property because it's much more, it's much more workable for the county and the property owner to work together. In many cases, we've made adjustments to the design to make it more accommodating. But if your question is, you know, can a, a, a single property owner, let's say, I don't know, stopping the project is, is what you mean, but essentially the best way to do projects like this is, once you have a design, is to do a lot of public outreach, educate the public on what you're planning on doing and take their feedback. Take, take what their concerns are back, because there may be some things that we're not aware of that they can, they can give us in terms of information. Also, in many cases, we'll look at multiple alternatives. And whichever alternative makes the most sense to accomplish the goal of the project and meet the needs of the public could be the outcome.
Is an easement one of those options? You didn't mention easements. Where the property owner still owns the property, but gives right to the.
Yes, that is, that is absolutely possible. We have areas where sidewalks are in easements. It, I think it depends on the circumstance and what fits the, the bill the best. In many cases, having a sidewalk on private property can become complicated in terms of liabilities and that sort of thing. So in many cases, the property owner wants the local jurisdiction to own that area. However, if it infringes on their enjoyment of the property in some way, certainly an easement is something we could consider.
So just so I'm clear, the property owner does not have the ability to stay in action on their private property, but connects from accommodation? Is that the bottom line of it?
Not the county, but at the very end of the day, right, if the authority having jurisdiction in this case are to the county, desire is viewed as an independent authority, it can. But that's a delegate decision. And I think, you know, you want to go ninety-nine, twenty-eight percent of the way in accommodation before you get to that point.
Right. That's correct.
Chairman G.
Madam Mayor.
Jason, we have in our possession the authority, I guess, or authorization is a better word, to put sidewalks in. It was many years ago, all of the people on, I think it was the east side had signed off on it. And I'm sure you probably know this because you've been around for a while too. And, and I'm very, this is one of my issues that I'm very passionate about. They had all signed off and somehow there was a discrepancy on the cost to implement and lay down the sidewalks. So the town vacated that project much to my chagrin, but this was many, many, many years ago. Is that not, I know with the library going in, there's obviously going to have to be a sidewalk in front of the library and, and it's not going to be a sidewalk to nowhere. Is it worth looking at resurrecting the interest of those that had signed off? Because many of them are still the same residents of, oh gosh, it was probably in two thousand, two thousand and five that that happened. Have you all even, do you have that in your possession? Are we only the keepers of the keys on that one?
Well, because there are other departments that actually were involved in the project, it may be that, let's say, our public works department was the keeper of, of those pieces of information. I'm not as familiar with them, quite honestly. But, you know, anytime you sort of start fresh, anything you have from the past that can be usable in terms of starting the conversation, certainly we can, you know, always try to stir, stir those things up. I will, I will say though, that the only thing people are bound by were purchased right of way or purchased easements. You know, and sometimes people have a change of heart. Hopefully they don't. But, you know, any, anything we can do to get the conversation going, that's great. So any pieces of information the town has to, to help the project along when we get started would be great.
And I think community outreach is going to be very important on this project, but they're wanting it because people are already walking in their yard. So this is a really important, important step in making our town walkable. Thank you for your work on that. I appreciate it.
Mr. Kendrick, before you move on, could I back you up to the Washington Avenue sidewalk?
Yeah.
If I understood you correctly, I heard you say that, I'm sorry, that's not the one. I want to back you up further. Sorry. To the radio station roadside path. I think I heard you say that the MDOT bikeways grant, the town needs to make a decision on that. Is that the town council? And can you help me understand more about that?
The town, I'll say the town mothers and fathers. Council, you know, planning commission, whoever, I think all of you. It's really a question of, you know, how much do you, I mean, let's, let's say we're talking about on the outside of one point five million dollar project. If you go to the transportation alternatives program route, you're talking about seven fifty state, I mean, seven fifty town, seven fifty state slash federal. But you're also sacrificing a lot of time, those projects, even if you walk in on a shovel ready project. The use of federal funds adds amount of paperwork and a year late project. So that's, you know, the consideration. If it's a Maryland bikeways program, because federal fund are not involved, you all are administering the project under your own rules. You know, things will move much quicker. If that's an eighty twenty project, then, I will do math, we're probably looking at one million, one point two million in state bikeways money and four hundred thousand, whatever, three hundred thousand in town funds. Obviously, that would be a far better situation, but the risk on there is that you're probably less likely to get a million or two. So the answer probably lies somewhere in between. It may be that you say, you know, we're going to do a fifty percent match, but we want bikeways money because we don't want to touch the, the tax federal money. But, you know, we already short circuited that process once when you all had us do the initial feasibility study in order to get in line more quickly and, you know, let us get, you know, another two and a half months into it and we'll kind of, and I want to have some conversation with that boss out as well and we'll see where we go.
Thank you.
Did I explain that clearly? I saw.
Chairman Gann, I have a question. Director Harrington, I thought that we actually received funding for the bike path.
We did. We, you received the three hundred and twenty-eight for the design pay.
Okay, okay. And we didn't do anything to go to seek funding to complete it?
Yeah, so we knew that it would take about a year to get into the construction applications. That's why we will be done in May.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may, I think our idea was to design during one cycle and then go out after we have the design to sort of seek the grant money, if you will, at the second phase, which is sort of traditional.
Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Chairman Gann. Just while we're on the subject, I noticed on the radio station road side path that there are two pedestrian crossings. One is a box elder that leads into Lake Tillman. And the other one, I guess, is in front of the schools or Board of Ed.
And we're working on what is northern, what is.
Okay. My question is, because this is a county own and maintain, would they participate in the construction or payment of that crossing? I guess I have to ask Jason, I guess, right?
I think, I think that needs to be part of a conversation for the county.
My, my recommendation for that would be that the, the town write a letter to the county commissioners, because any, any budget decision is a county commissioner decision. And if you're requesting funds to support a project like that, that you would essentially write a letter asking for such.
Okay. And then just a follow up question on the Charles Street flashing beacons. Who, who's paying for that?
So you all pay for the designer?
Okay.
Thirty-five, forty dollars.
For both of them.
Yeah, right, quick work.
Okay.
And then the state is constructing the third box.
Okay.
Which is probably seventy-five to ninety dollars.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on walkability issues required?
A question. So you mentioned that there was a path at Agroopia. So is that at the radio station entrance? Or is that the entrance closer to four eighty-eight?
So there's an existing path at, if you're heading north at the first entrance.
Which is radio station. Well, depending on which way you're coming. Okay.
The first entrance is at Agroopia, right? Never fall. There's a path from there all the way up to the high school problem. On your left, it's about an eight foot path, six, six or eight foot path that's existed. So we would extend that along like high school up to, past the board of ed and then to Laurel Springs Regional Park. Where we cross over is still the subject of some discussion in the context of the Pine Ridge connector road, in the context of the county's future plans, what the school board wants, et cetera. So we're working through that in the crossing now. And then at radio station, excuse me, at four eighty-eight, it kind of comes in front of the the assisted living facility and we're there. I wind up a little bit.
Okay, so I have two other questions. So the path that you're saying that's going to go in the direction of education, I think we touched on that, on this. Is there going to be a path to cross over to the park? Is it Tillman Park or?
Yeah, Tillman Lake and.
Tillman, like, yes, so there's, okay.
There will be a crossing and again, up at somewhere in the vicinity, north of just north of high school, high school park.
Okay. And so the last question, is the path going to be multi-use? Is it going to be bike for bikes or?
Tend to be a shared use path all the way from, you know, Bennington up to.
Thank you.
Chairman, if I could ask a couple of questions. So it seems like, seems like, so Councilman Matt Challenger Ward two. So it seems like we've got some pieces of an overall comprehensive plan, obviously, to make it more walkable in town. I just, I have a hard time divorcing the plan in general and collecting all these pieces and having a stoplight there on four eighty-eight at radio station road that seems to create more traffic in this area. And then not having a plan at, basically at the entrance and exit of King's Grant over to the park. Is there not a way that we can tie this all together and work together with the county and come back to the state and say, look, we've got all of these pieces working kind of independently. Let's tie it together because I don't know if you have any thoughts on, on the traffic light that, that we were talking about before we got here at radio station road. But it just does not seem, I get what you're saying, Mr. Groth about it being more expensive, but just long term and overall use of this area, it seems to make a lot more sense as a roundabout, right?
Well, it depends, it depends on what your goal is. If your goal is to facilitate a smoother traffic flow and not have that vehicle backup, like you said, then certainly a roundabout is a feasible alternative. If you're talking about introducing a lot more bicycle and pedestrian traffic along the shared use path, crossing one of those roads is going to become more difficult with a roundabout. While people do slow down, they don't stop like they do at a traffic light. So be careful in your ultimate planning as to what you're, just focus on what your goals were, are, and is, is what I would recommend. Now, certainly we can have a more coordinated approach in terms of county, state and town on multiple intersections and pedestrian crossings, but just keep in mind that with a roundabout, people do not stop. So your, your crossing is going to have to be in a strategic location where people, where drivers can very easily see the crossing and you're probably going to have to have more of those RFBs, those rapidly flashing beacons that were mentioned earlier, where they're, they're push actuated and they, they strobe so that cars can see them. We've had to install them on several county roads because we've had some pedestrians hit or even killed. So just have to throw that out there.
But we have, we've laid this out at this point to be sufficiently wide of anything that would occur at four eighty-eight and, and radio station. So if, for whatever reason, the roundabout is ultimately decided upon, well, that's not prevailing at this point from the county state, then, you know, we, we're clear of that to the, to the west. So do I have personal views on roundabouts versus signals? Yes. You know, not going to offer too much about that this evening, other than the fact that that's going to be more, it's a more elegant solution, but it's a lot trickier to pull off.
Councilman Jenkins?
Glad to offer an observation and my observation only, um, and a question. Uh, roundabouts come in different varieties and species and forms. Uh, and with, and with respect, um, from my perspective, uh, I think there's another way to design a roundabout. Because again, with respect, state highway is car centric. Okay, that's what they do. But we've built and designed roads for speed and not safety. And so I can show you and I will show Jamie, he already knows that, I'm not going to, he already knows that. Uh, there are other examples where you don't have to design the Taj Mahal for a roundabout and accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists and safety. There are other ways to do this. And so again, my perspective, I would hope that we would pursue that. Then just this, again, this car centric thinking about designing stuff. Cause I agree completely with Councilman Trowinger. If we're going to have a comprehensive plan for a walkable La Plata, from my, again, my perspective, we need to get away from this car centric mindset that all design is based upon speed to get X amount of cars through a road section. That is not the way of the world anymore. It isn't. And, and that's my opinion, but I can show you documents, we'll, also will prove that. So I would just hope that we would begin to look at other options and that's not over-design a roundabout.
Yeah, I mean, I think what Mr. Law, if I check correctly, current is by having the signal, you create more gaps upstream in particular crossover, um, whether it's at Bachtel or, or wherever. Again, we've set it up, we've set up the design for the path to accommodate, uh, either alternative. And, and we've actually set up the path, and more broadly speaking, to respect the ultimate kind of boulevard approach that the county has set aside right away for along radio station, it's 488. Uh, so that if that were to occur one day, then, you know, we would not have to rebuild that.
If I could just, last thing on this, so just what we're talking about, seems like the right time. Uh, I know, um, Madam Mayor said that there was a study a couple of years ago about that crossing from King's Grant to the park, all cross 488. Given if, if there's a light up the road at radio station, like you said, that'll create a break in traffic at least one, one way. Up the road will be a little bit lighter, but is this not the right time to address this again? I mean, can we not go back since we're doing all this stuff right now, saying, look, I mean, we, I don't know what day they went out there, but on Saturdays and Sundays, it's constant. And it's not, it's not as much a traffic calming issue, but it's a pedestrian safety and potential death issue at, at that moment because of that hill. And because of the overall speed on 488 coming down, there's no way to anticipate, uh, some of this stuff as a pedestrian from that spot.
So we're going to talk in a few minutes about, uh, Maryland six and the money the state has put aside in votes for, you know, future something Maryland says. And, uh, one of the suggestions that I will make at that point is to say, you know, that the limits that they have defined are pretty small, Willow Lane to Route 301. Um, and I think you, and they've assigned a rather large sum of money for that, um, what, one, less than a mile, maybe a mile stretch. I think there ought to be a fuller look from 48 and six all the way in, some of which were accomplishing, accomplishing with the sign map. Uh, because I think there are speed management issues, safety issues in, in that entire segment. And it may be that some of that money is better spent on a better solution at, at 48 and radio station. I, you know, that's my view, that's been about 20 minutes. So, but part of what we're talking about, I guess people were kind of clear now, if I may, just kind of move on is, as, as I indicated, and this county knows, and, uh, identified with this capital program for the next six years, that it would begin a process of, uh, rethinking Charles Street between Willow Lane and the 301. Excuse me. Uh, what that looks like is anybody's guess at this point. So I think, but the only message I wanted to, um, convey tonight, you know, our recommendation is that you all need to define the success of that project before another party does. Right, so what does it mean to be investing 10 million dollars in Maryland six? Uh, you know, I, I have no reason to think anything other than the state highway would spend a lot of time with you all working through those issues. But I also know that once they get bowling, they tend to take on their own lives. And so my encouragement would be, you know, the state's going to take a long time to get there anyway. But I ask that, uh, you know, let, let's start a conversation about what the scope of the project really is and what you're looking to achieve when you made that initial request and have them designed towards that.
So this is, uh, Commissioner Gann. So do I understand that we're talking about the money, but we don't have a concept of what it will look like yet?
That's, I think, generally correct. So what if somebody connected correctly or wrong, in 2004, the town would have mastered streetscape concept plan. Um, you know, I know that, that SHA has been doing some analysis. I don't know the extent of that analysis. And I think at the end of the day, what they did is they just kind of picked it up and said, when we're planning a quarter like this, we say X number of miles times Y dollars. And that's what we're going to put in the budget because we have no idea what we're going to do. And then when I was deputy director at Baltimore Geotaping, we did the same thing. Somebody said, Ricehurst Town Road from Northern Parkway to the city line is going to be a priority. We said, okay, we spent about $10 million on these projects in other parts of the city. That's our plug number. And then frankly, we started designing without really going back and doing that first step. I'm sure SHJ can do that first step of purpose and need. And so, uh, with you all, and I just would again encourage you all to help them to define success sooner than at the point.
Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Chairman Gann, and Dave Jenkins Ward four. Um, just to follow on that comment, would, would it be appropriate for us to initiate uh, quarterly, whatever meetings with the district engineer to talk about these and other issues on a quarterly basis?
So.
Or something to that effect?
I'm wrong and believe that the county does quarterlies with, uh, SHJ, some public works, PGM, and a couple of others, and it may, um, be who you all to, to be at that table. Jason, is that still occurring? I know in other counties it does.
Yes, so we meet with them on a regular basis. I can't recall if it's monthly or quarterly at this point, but regardless, um, I think you, uh, the town has enough, um, interest going with MDOT that it would be very beneficial for you to have a regular meeting. I, I don't know that you want to mix until there's, uh, joint projects, meaning, you know, such as one of the ones earlier mentioned, like sidewalks on Washington Avenue. Um, I don't know that you want to mix your topics with ours, but, um, that, that's completely up to you all. I mean, you're all, you, you all are always welcome to attend our meetings with them. I will tell you that we frequently cancel them because we don't have as many, uh, current ongoing projects with them. But, um, I would encourage you to meet with them early and often as Mr. Kendrick is recommending.
There you go. Chairman Gann.
Thank you.
Chairman Gann, Director Harrington has requested the floor.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask is for Director Harrington to weigh in on this conversation.
Okay. Director Harrington?
Good evening again. So I, I wanted to step in and say that, um, the town did meet with SHA uh, and their consultant who's doing the Charles Street, uh, review. And so the town manager and myself did walk the entire length of Charles Street from 301 down to Willow Lane, uh, to kind of talk about the issues that we have, the pedestrian crossings, um, certain intersections that are causing problems. Uh, so we did do that whole trip with them to kind of point out what we, what we thought needed to be addressed. Uh, they also sent us a worksheet that we completed, um, to kind of reevaluate those, um, concerns a little bit. And I don't know that we've received any responses from them at this point regarding the status or what they're, you know, where they're at at this point. Um, but we did have an active role in that review and providing input.
Did you have anything to add, Councilman Bryant Ward?
So I did want to ask Director Harrington, um, given the feedback from, um, Councilman Trowinger and Jenkins, um, to read, you know, to look at, I think he said 2004, the streetscape's plan was put in place. Here we are, you know, 2022, um, certainly things would have changed. And will we be revisiting those streetscape plans that we have? Um, because I'm not confident that they will match what our population looks like right now.
Yeah, we did take a look at the, uh, previous streetscape plan. It's most likely not going to work the way that we had done it before. Um, so I think that for the immediate future, there are a few intersections that need the most attention. Um, not only for pedestrian safety, but for vehicular safety. Um, I knew that there was a, an accident on Charles Street this afternoon. So it's, it's something that we need to start, um, paying attention to and kind of calming some of those travel movements on and off the right of way. Um, but I don't know if the previous, uh, streetscape is really feasible at this point in what we're looking to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mudd has requested the floor.
Mr. Mudd, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you. Um, very interesting presentation so far. I have to agree and stress from my perspective, what I've heard and that the town really does need to, uh, embrace state highway on a regular basis. Um, the, the meeting Janine had with them when they walked Charles Street is, is a great start. Um, but it's something that should be routine. Um, there, there's too many issues confronting the town that require town and state coordination. Uh, and to name probably one of the larger, it's, uh, Pine Grove, also known as Heritage Green. Uh, the entrance on Charles Street, uh, is, is going to be a key, uh, impact to the town. And the sooner we can work with state highway, uh, on that issue, the better off we'll be. Uh, not only will that entrance affect that location and Willow Lane, but, uh, it's going to have impacts all the way up and down Charles Street from 48 to Route 301. So the sooner we can get a handle on, on what that's going to mean, uh, with state highways assistance, uh, I, I think we'll be better off and be better prepared, uh, to keep these projects moving, uh, to meet their deadlines. But at the same time, ensure that the traffic infrastructure entrances and improvements, uh, are on schedule to be provided when necessary. Uh, so again, my point is to encourage the town to, uh, routinely and regularly meet with state highway. Uh, at Charles County, I know that's worked in the past when I was with, with the county. Uh, our routine meetings with them, uh, were very beneficial, uh, and not necessarily from the, uh, upper end, political end, but the day-to-day, uh, engineers with state highway, the entrance, uh, experts, uh, the local engineers. Um, the day-to-day relationship is as important, uh, as any, uh, for us to make progress. So again, I just wanted to reiterate that as a positive step that I think we can take, uh, as we confront these various traffic issues.
Yeah. Back to you, Mr. Kendricks.
All right, so actually that's kind of a good segue, uh, between Charles Street and, and the next topic. Um, you know, when you think about Charles Street, you have to think about context, right? It really is, other than Rosewood Road, right, the only way to get across town. Right, there's, I guess at the bottom end, you have Glen Alden that, you know, serves folks down there. That's not really where the traffic is, you know? So as things like Pine Ridge are making sure that that cross, you know, connection across the road tracks is, you know, a priority to someone, you know, is, is important. Uh, thinking about the other, uh, making sure that, you know, radio station road, 48 radio station road is a viable north-south path, you know, is, is important, right? Because right now, everything is geared, you know, if all the development were occurred with Pine Ridge and everything else over the next, let's say five, seven years, you're just dumping a lot of traffic onto Maryland six. And you need to have other ways to get to the north-south arteries. And so it becomes easier to make a case for Maryland six being a much more kind of traffic calm, you know, neighborhood main street if there are viable alternate paths. But right now, Maryland six is, you know, basically the only way across town. Uh, and so that's, you know, as we, we think about having that conversation with SHA about six, we got to think about the other pieces too, because at the end of the day, you're right, that they do have to think about their, for better or worse, primary customer being the 22,000 or so cars a day in the road. Uh, okay, so, uh, kind of moving on then, the third topic and probably the one that requires the most conversation at the, at policy level at this point, has to do with traffic impact studies, adequate public facilities, and how that process all played out. So, and this was expressed probably, it could have been expressed a little bit better in the general plan, uh, if you know the burn target definitely. Uh, that, you know, growth, both in terms of adaptation as well as, you know, major growth projects of the town really need to be supported by adequate public science. Let me, let me, yes, ma'am. Oh, you, I thought, I thought you were talking to the Republicans again. Uh, so, you know, what, we've been working with Janine, um, and with the county staff and even state staff, uh, on many of these traffic impact studies for the projects that have been coming through uh, over the course of the past two years now, other stage posts, people chase, pine ridge, Montero, South Down Center, you name it. They're, they're coming fast and furious, it's great, you kind of anticipated that in the cop line. And then, and so the question is how we manage all of that. And the, the problem is, there, there's a few problems. One is that you've got these overlapping developments and phased developments which by themselves, you know, as individual phases or small projects, don't really rise to the threshold of requiring traffic mitigation in the conventional sense and in the way that, um, the rules are structured today. Right, so, and, and when we talk about this, I'm not thinking about any particular development, but take the state table shapes. What's happened three or four bases now, you're now looking at, you know, a phase of what, 189 units somewhere. And just, just a matter of, it's, it's neither here nor there, right? It's just, it's been a lot, uh, you know, accumulated over time, right? And as have several other jurisdictions. And the town doesn't have a great mechanism to, um, town does not have a great mechanism to find creative ways to address basing for the cumulative impacts of development. And so you will talk about the, the southwest side in a minute, um, without going into any great detail, you get 1,600 or so units, including those which have already been built. And frankly, all the traffic which exists coming from Virginia to, you know, Prince George's Fountain and everywhere else in between. So it's really difficult under, and then this is common everywhere and some jurisdictions are finally picking up on it. It's really difficult to find traffic mitigation strategies for developments of 20, 40, 60, 80, 100 units, right? Even up to 200 units, it becomes really difficult unless there's a really acute, acute issue. Uh, first of all, let's say, uh, you had a traffic signal you wanted to be built. Well, putting in a 20 or 30 unit development, it's hard to say that the 50 or 60 trips generated by that development ought to trigger a hundred thousand dollar expense by a developer to build a traffic thing, right? It's, there's a proportionality test here that kind of has to be met as well. Um, you don't have your own adequate public facilities requirements, the county has theirs. Uh, the state does not have adequate public facilities requirements. They do have a process for assessing traffic impact and granting assets to their roads. Those three things, I would say broadly align, but you don't have the specific tool in your code to get your uh, pieces where you want them to be. I'm not talking about, uh, money here. I'm not talking about, you know, being a developer for doing acts. Just talking about finding a orderly way to manage roads so that everybody paying, you know, a fair share towards these programs that need to be done. Right? Uh, and, you know, my experience now in 15 or so years of dealing with developers and these, these things, they want certainty of process. Certainly they don't want to pay any more money, right? But probably more importantly, they want certainty of process. And so, you know, having to negotiate to do a traffic impact study for every 12. And so, you know, having to negotiate to do a traffic impact study for every 20, 40, 60, 80 unit development is, you know, multi-phase is, you know, adds lots of uncertainty to the, to the process. And so having a more orderly process is certainly what I, I have found, I think most of us would agree, developers are, um, looking for. So certainly a process, proportionality, how you interface on a, uh, legal basis with the state and the county and the developer, you know, speaks to a need for some type of way adequate public facilities approach. And so again, I want to be clearly cautious and say, it just so happens to be the example in front of us, but if we were having this conversation 10 years ago about agricopia and King's Grant and, you know, Pine Ridge and others in that northwest quadrant, I would have been telling you the same things back then, just kind of where we are today. So state, the Montero property, Southtown Center, Stagecoach, Steeplechase, all told, including those units already built, about 1,520 units thought of over, you know, whatever time they need to build. Now, again, first phase of Steeplechase probably works just fine for the traffic objective. Second phase probably works just fine. Third phase, as an independent matter, probably works just fine. There are safety issues, operational issues from a capacity perspective, you know? That one phase kind of neither, neither here nor there, right? It's when you start to add up, and then you add in Stagecoach and, and the 500, some odd units that are proposing. And all of those would dump out onto Old Stagecoach and then onto 301 to go north or south. And then Montero and Southtown Center don't really have any northbound access to 301. So how, so now they come down and make a U-turn. Will U-turns on a six-lane highway or not, you know, ideal from a speed, safety, gap management perspective? So, you know, this kind of dealing with the cumulative impacts, the phasing is difficult to do unless you have some type of adequate public facility source. I know that there's been some discussion among commission, the council and staff about moving something forward. I strongly encourage you to be doing so sooner rather than later. And again, it's not about dinging developers to do more, it's more about having an orderly process to, so it's clear about what they have to do. And then kind of as we look specifically at, at the southwest and these developments, you know, you've got four projects that are active at some level that have some interpartial connectivity, but they don't really flow from a plan. So in the old, or in the, in the comprehensive plan, there is a Quailwood Parkway South, I believe, so running from Port Tobacco Road down to Old Stagecoach, which I think in concept is kind of there between Steeplechase and Stagecoach, but how that gets built for those properties, depending on the, the timing of Steeplechase, depending on the timing of Montero and Southtown Center, you know, then you've got a gap in property to the, to the north, you know? There needs to be an alignment that is developed that people can kind of work through as more things occur over time. That, I think about Prince Frederick, for example, and the loop road, if you remember on the west side of Maryland 24, right? They had, over the course of time, as developments have occurred, created a loop road that is for local access, so people didn't have to fight their way along Maryland 24. Effectively have that on the east side of, of 301 with Washington Avenue, or farther out, the 48, 48 Radio Station Road, you have nothing left at one, the west side of 301. And it's, it's, as you certainly heard in your deliberation on projects in the last several weeks, it's causing lots of consternation, but it is a, an appropriate technical issue to be reached at this point. So what we have proposed to staff at this point is to do a access management study for the southwest quadrant that really looks at all four developments that are currently in play, aggregate their, and, and better understand how their impacts were calculated, making sure their assumptions all line up. I think generally, probably they do, they were all done by the developers. A common traffic consultant among the four developers there, you know, some lined up something, figure out what they're going to do with, kind of impacts and mitigations. So that's our recommendation on the southwest, but it really speaks to a larger need, like how do you implement that, right? So what is your A P F tool to implement something like that?
Janine?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman, so it sounds like this is hindsight is 2020. I mean, and define a, if you don't, excuse me, an access management study. Define that, but you're, you're making recommendations, you're saying, you know, stage one, phase one of stage of Steeplechase, no impact, stage, phase two, no impact. Now we're in phase threes. Stagecoach is not, hasn't started construction or anything, and Southtown Center, we don't know when or if they're going to do anything. So at what point should we have been thinking about phase three of Steeplechase prior to hindsight being 2020? I'm, I'm not clear on that. And access management study, what does that look like? What does that mean?
Sure. Let me, let me answer the first one. When did you do the meeting in this? Yesterday, it's a day. Meaning, we would have been good to have had these tools more firmly in place, that town has generally relied upon the tools that exist. Excuse me. Apologies. Town is generally relied, relied on the tools that exist in the county's app phone, A P F, adequate public facilities ordinance, or the goodwill of relationship with S H A to kind of guide things in the right direction. What is, what happens, and it happened to Boulder County and Cecil County and everywhere else, if developers find ways to try and relate the process. Now, S H A doesn't require me to do a signal, or I don't meet county's thresholds, or, you know, but that doesn't solve problems. And so my message is, like, let's sit down, let's like, figure out what the problem is, and then figure out what the path forward is, right? So ideally, you would have had this, you know, 10, 20 years ago, but here we are. You still have enough development in the pipeline over the next 20 years, 30 years, that it would be good to have that in a public facility. That's the first part. What is an access management study? Basically, the, the concept is that not every developing, development needs to dump out onto the, the major arterial. There ought to be secondary arterials and ways around minor, but minor collectors that lead to major collectors that lead to, without being too technical. There ought to be, road need to respect their, for access points to road need to be related to their, the roadway intended purpose. Roadblock wasn't intended as a highway. I think you don't want a stoplight every, you know, 500 feet. You don't want an entrance every 500 feet. You don't want crossover from southbound, northbound every 500 feet for safety reasons, for operational reasons, et cetera. So in an area like this, where you have multiple projects going on at the same time, what is the common approach to solving some of these safety, capacity and operational issues? That's really what an access study will set. I, we have several concepts in my head is in our mind today that I won't go into, but it's really about how you, how do you maintain the integrity of the road network that exists for a certain purpose? Is the shortness.
Chairman, again, I have one more question. So when you look at Steeplechase, there are so many constraints to that piece of property. It's almost so far you can go. So when you look at an access management study, you know, everything that has been thought of, and there has been thought to this, but, you know, I walked with Director Stahl last Friday, it did start out as a residential area, it started out as something else. And so with that thought in place, everything that's being proposed is not ideal in the resident's mind. So the access management study, what is it going to tell us that based upon that property we are not already aware of?
I think, without, I'm trying to be careful about presupposed solutions. The, probably the most aggressive solution, and I realize there are environmental constraints and, and property ownership constraints, would be a, a loop road, what was, what one point called, Quailwood Parkway South, that runs from Maryland 6 to, oh, excuse me, from Port Tobacco, the Maryland 6, down to Old Stagecoach. Does that rightfully exist there? Not really. Does it probably need to exist? Yeah. Have certain developments already kind of cast some of their dime? Yes. Can it be corrected? Yes. So I think, kind of figuring out what those, you know, their signal, you know, so there's already been generally, there already a signal at Stagecoach and 301, fine. But frankly, until Stagecoach gets developed, there's, but for action of the county or the state, there's nobody to pay for that. Until that Stagecoach gets developed, there's no secondary road there. There are, I mean, again, the best example I look at is Prince Frederick. It was the county, after years of debate, discussion with the state, that said, okay, we just need to build a road, right? And developers will figure out, you know, kind of how you pay your fair share later, or frankly, don't pay your fair share at all, just because of the way that kind of the timing of development occurs. Sometimes they donated land, sometimes they built, you know, a certain section to a certain base. Sometimes the development just occurred, because that's the way it will be in those.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mudd and Mr. Yekley have requested the floor.
Commissioner Mudd?
Thank you. I'd like to ask our rep, for me, the, one of the single biggest problems we're confronted with is a singular access, which, as things will progress, could support up to 1,100 residents, residential homes, and that would be Steeplechase and a good portion of Stagecoach. The assumption is, and everybody seems correct, that the ultimate connection of Stagecoach to Old Stagecoach Road could be many years away. So that's my bigger concern. And, and the question is, based on your knowledge of other jurisdictions, my guess is most jurisdictions have subdivision regulations that require a second form of access after potentially 1,000 trips is generated. And, and the town is confronting this issue directly here with this project. There are future annexations on the board to be considered that are also potentially going to connect 1,500 units to a singular point of access. And I, and I think from a public safety standpoint, that's a real problem that has existed and will continue to exist until the town can enact new regulations that require a second point of access to be included in the design plan. So that's really the question. And, and that's really my bigger concern with the various projects we're grappling with, which is a single point of access for that number of units is unfathomable. It, it's a clear safety issue, and it'd be interested to hear what your thoughts are on that issue.
I think the question of a single point of access is easily followed by a single point of access to what? In, in state highway land and, and in most, you know, states, on state roads, you are entitled to a, you are entitled to a single point of access. And the bar for getting a second point of access is pretty high, because the, the, well, policy and technical thing is that there ought to be access points via secondary roads. And so you build a, a network of, a grid network of streets, right? Obviously, phasing, staging, timing, you know, willingness to contribute and participate is the million, are the million dollar question, right? But it typically starts with a town or a county laying out a master planned roadway to some extent that then is honored by, you know, future developers. And I might add, you know, as the northwest quadrant, as I think you indicated, probably is the same issue at some point, right? When you think about anything that happened north of Port Tobacco Road, and that's why you've got Quailwood Parkway North and Quailwood Parkway South in your master plan. But those are literally just, you know, prey on lines on connect. They need to be thought through, you know, jointly with the development community and others, property owners to think about how those play out over time.
Kelly, did you say there was someone besides Commissioner Mudd wanted to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Yekley would like to speak.
Mr. Yekley, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ben Yekley, and I am the Adequate Public Facilities Planner for the Charles County.
Can't hear you, Mr. Yekley.
Speak up there, Ben.
I'm not sure why, is this any better?
It's just your soft spoken man.
I am, sorry about that. Good evening, everybody. My name is Ben Yekley, and I'm the Adequate Public Facilities Planner for Charles County. I was just here, you know, to offer any kind of help as you all draft your adequate public facilities ordinance. I'm more than willing to, to help in any way, shape or form that I can. And I'm also available if anyone has any questions about our processes in terms of adequate public facilities, about traffic studies, how they're required, not required, how mitigation is required, anything like that. I'm more than willing to explain anything or anything that you guys have questions about, but just wanted to let you know that I'm here and, and listening.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Yes. After listening to everything and looking at the last few projects that the planning commission has reviewed, one thing that's come to my mind that I would like your feedback on is the immediate concern, the near-term concern versus the future concerns. And what I mean specifically by this, all the projects in question were done, and I'll use the term, no pun intended, without a comprehensive plan, meaning there was no overlay of the various projects to see how traffic, transportation, cause, safety would impact or fit together the town as a whole. And that's obvious because the work on 6 will impact 301, which will impact subdivision south of 301, which will, not now, but in two or three years from now, have a second and third order effect of changing our zoning designation, which is what I care about. It'll also present the problem to the council of generating more revenue, more construction, because we'll have to put more mitigating measures in as everything from accidents, traffic incidents go up. So my first question is, what are the mitigating factors without penalizing developers that we've already approved and told them this was good to go? Do you have any recommendations on that in the immediate term?
I'm just, we're in a work session and not a council meeting. You know, unfortunately, the, the near-term solutions are probably worse for the public at large than the light of day. And I would not be excited, for example, about a second or a third accident, like one to 301 for safety reasons. That, you know, to me, that's a, not a great short-term solution. That said, either so or none, right? So, you know, that's when you kick into your long-term thinking and you, you start to kind of maybe brand barrier for years. And maybe there is a way to, you know, structure, you know? I'm very careful what I'm saying. I think there's ways to structure the phasing of development where the town can use its authorities, either existing or to be had, in order to get to longer-term solutions, right-of-way dedication, you know, subdivision regulation, adjustments, and adequate public facilities, overlay of a, a, an adequate public facilities ordinance, a special tax district, you know, or assessment, you know, there, there's lots of ways to get there. The, the short-term solutions are not great, but property owners have rights, and the situation is a little bit. So I, I do have some specific technical suggestions, and if the So I, I do have specific technical suggestions, um, and if you'll get into this back and forth a double, why should I pay for this, and why should I take care of that? To me, that's not the issue, right? The cost of the truck, if I'm moving forward, right, and I have to make an immediate decision on some of these in the Southwest, I will be pushing for a signal to pay, not all the side of Old Stagecoach, uh, because it, it will give you some gaps in traffic. Right, right now, if people turn out of Steeplechase, they got, they're what, five hundred feet, make a quick U-turn, and head, and hope that all goes well, right? And it happens today, and it, you know, the crash volume is not high, but everybody arguing that increases the rest. So maybe the short-term answer actually is to get that signal that is otherwise required by the Steeple, well, I shouldn't say required, that was otherwise commonplace in the Stagecoach development built earlier, right, so that you create those gaps in traffic. Again, the piecemeal way in which developments come in and mitigation, you know, is, is a portioned out, um, you know, is, is unfortunate. There are places that have found solutions to it, it requires a variety of policy compromises. And I think I'd probably be better certainly if we talk it through with more, in more detail through an access management study than applying any more specific technical solutions.
Okay, and just two more quick things. Am I correct that the current development, not anyone in particular, but once built out to completion, and then with the, coupled with the growth of the town, and the adjoining areas, will generate or will cause us to have to relook our zoning, meaning it will impact the zoning designations, you know, two or three years, and it will also generate expenditures, whether we want them or not, for safety mitigation? Would that be a fair assumption, or is that an unfair assumption?
Maybe both.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking, you can explain. I'm just trying to get a better statement.
Who bears what cost and when, right? At the end of the day, it's a state roadway, right? And so, you know, anything that happens, post-access granting is, is on them to do something. Which is, what role do you as a town or the county in the case of, case of, case of Stagecoach, um, what actions do you take upfront to, to mitigate some of that? So, you know, to whom does it generate its expenditures? I can name four different ones. Could be the town, could be the county, could be the state, could be the developer.
And I just got one.
That's the best answer I think, if.
Samson, you have one more question that wants to tell us?
My director, Harrington's going to address, but she's had it in there for a little while, so, um, just be aware.
Okay, thanks. Okay, and I just, just had one last question. I'm not sure, I mean, I knew it's done in the traffic mitigation studies, but I was giving you the instance for context. I was going home, I turned into the development in which I lived, there were some maintenance trucks out there, they were just doing their job, I couldn't get around them, couldn't get in. Okay? So that made me think, if there's an accident, something happens, that kind of thing. And I'll just use where I live at, Steeplechase, accident happens or something goes wrong right outside, right where three oh one connects, who's actually liable for that? Is that the town, the state? Or the developer? I'm just trying to figure out who.
The short answer is whoever votes decide. And I'm not, not trying to be fluffing, that's, that's the best answer, I think, you know, it's fair to give. Liable, first of all, liable for what? Right, and the second is, you know, who are the parties involved? I think we're all, kind of, from a policy perspective, we're all a little bit liable for not having the tool in place to make sure that doesn't happen. From a legal perspective, I'll yield to Mr. Manuel.
Uh, Director Harrington, you have a question, comment?
Yes, so I just wanted to, um, make sure that I reiterate that the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance is basically the key that we are missing right now. It has been moved to the top of my priority list. Um, I will be teleworking this week, um, and that will be one of the first things that I start getting back to. Um, I know that the town attorney i- is heavily involved with the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, but I'll also be working with Jamie on this in the initial reviews. And as, uh, Mr. Yekley pointed out, we have been, uh, in close communication, getting their updates that they're currently working on with their Adequate Public Facilities ordinance at the county. And then it's going to take a lot of coordination and discussion, as was already mentioned, with State Highway Administration. That is their right-of-way, and any work that's done on three oh one needs to go through them. So it's, it's going to be a lot of communication, we're going to have to work with the developers and work with the stakeholders, um, in the area to try to move things forward and to improve the safety along that corridor. But I think that getting that Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance in place is going to be a big difference when we're looking at our reviews, um, and ensuring that traffic impact studies are being required, that certain levels of service are being met, that certain warrants are being covered, so we can make sure that, uh, any improvements needed along the right-of-ways are incorporated into the development. So yes, it is going to be difficult, um, and as Jamie said, I'm, I'm hoping that the developers understand the situation and are willing to work with us in the meantime. But I will, I will note that the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance draft has been completed, I need to add in the school seat allocation policy, um, and then I'm going to get that back to the town attorney and, uh, town manager for the initial discussion, uh, and then hopefully move that forward with review at the Planning Commission level and getting public comments and public input, um, as soon as possible. So I, I do want you to know that I am actively working on that, and I'm trying to move that forward as quickly as possible, because until we get that in place, we are kind of at the mercy of just trying to, uh, piecemeal, uh, different projects and looking at mitigation from a wide perspective.
And I, I would say, my experience is developers will rumble, but at the end of the day, what they want is certainty of process. This, the issue you had a few weeks ago about, um, Steeplechase, not to get too much, there was no requirement based upon the traffic, I think, at that point, they did a good deal. It kind of got, you know, its own life to it. Doesn't appropriate time to get into that stuff. I would, you know, there was, there was staff language that was proposed to try and give a little teeth into it, understand why, in the conversations, understand why the council didn't, um, add that language from a process standpoint. But Jamie was right, I think the development communities need to understand that they've got to work together, both among themselves and with, um, the town and county to figure something out. Just kind of everybody's single, you know, look, like, traffic studies always say, in Harrison Keeler terms, that all women are beautiful, all the children is strong, and things like that. And all the traffic vehicles operating at the level of service, eh? Right, that's what every, every traffic study I've worked on in every jurisdiction basically comes to that same conclusion. And there's some, there is some truth to that when you start considering things in very common.
So you're saying that traffic impact studies are not liable?
I think that would be a word for it, yes.
Okay, so I, I'm hearing from Director Harrington.
Let me, let me start with, speaking from firms done, many of them. I think people who write traffic impact studies have a client to be served, okay? First and foremost. I think traffic impact studies give you, um, the statements, all models are wrong, some are useful, right? There's a context to those studies, and I think the biggest problem with youth all face in that regard is you don't really have a tool to use those traffic impact studies. So somebody could write you the best report ever, right? Very much we do.
Okay, so I'm, I'm hearing from Director Harrington that top of her list is the Adequate Public Facilities. And that sounds good, worthy cause. So, Mr. Kendricks, you've also, uh, mentioned you're recommending this access management study for the Southwest Quadrant. Is that, is that over and beyond this Adequate Public Facilities?
I think they are, um, done in coordination. So in other jurisdictions, what they believe is they'll do a sub-area plan, let's, let's say you want to take the route of not requiring individual developers to have individual mitigation elements, but this is the project cost, the, the total project cost, this is your fair share, this is your fair, this is our fair share, the state's fair share, you need a way to allocate, you know, uh, those costs. So I think coming up with the plan and having the subdivision and APF regulations to deal with them, to some extent, two different things.
Okay, so.
Like, given, given the urgency of where we are and the pace of development projects coming through, um, this body, I think it would be good to have both going along, I guarantee.
Okay, so that's a good segue, really. Mr. Yekley's already offered the county to be involved with us on such a study, would the state also be involved?
I think it's got to be a, um, I mean, my recommendation would be that it is the state, the county, the town, and the property owners sitting down and figuring it out. There's some basic additional technical analysis that needs to occur. You know, each of you has different authorities, you all have land use authority. If your comp plans or your subdivision rights say one access point, right, to, you know, road X, that is one access point to road X, right? That's what in, again, in Albert County, along two four, that became the rule at a certain point. Now, the county chose not to enforce it at a certain point, or State Highway decided to usurp their authority, um, and granted notwithstanding that little regulations that have been followed, it was good as well, uh, but right now, you want to.
You have more to your presentation, go ahead.
Properly, the Z, the, you know, the person who owns the, the property that at this time, or if you need a compact project, or, well, the property.
When I say that, I mean, because when you say property owner, residents can think they're property owners.
Yeah, I think there is, I think existing residents are absolutely a stakeholder in that process.
That's why we invite on the public hearings.
But at, at the end of the day, I, I philosophically believe that's called a public right-of-way for reason, not because the public's to decide, it's control, that public is already invested in you, right? So everybody's voice gets heard, for better or worse, and then you suck. But at the end of the day, the public right-of-way is not to serve a private individual purpose, right?
So you still have a couple more major things to cover, Pine Ridge, traffic?
No, I, I just, this is actually a supplemental material.
Okay.
And I think we wanted to talk about Pine Ridge, it'd be good, but I think that's probably for another day.
Pine Grove, Pine Grove.
Pine Grove, sorry. Eric, Pine Ridge, yes, whatever we are. Pine Grove. One more oops, and miracles.
So one of the, the big things that I keep, kept hearing this, and I guess I would say this out loud as the chair of the commission and say it to the council, um, there needs to be active involvement between the town, the county, and the state on a regular basis. And then you've added property owners later, once we get into these access studies. So I, I don't know if that's already happening, but I would make that recommendation to, to make it happen.
So Director Harrington said that that was already an important thing.
We got to speak for, for Director Harrington, sorry to hear you. I mean, I think what I would say is, it is ongoing on a head-up, an ad hoc basis. Like, when we need to figure something out, they'll, you know, come and figure it out. But, but in doing so, right, we find this triangulation issue where, you know, a developer will run to the state and say, hey, can I get this? And then the developer will turn back and say, well, state said I could, right? So which one is not too late for you to do, and then it kind of just falls, right? So it's a little bit ad hoc in the way it occurs, and that's just a function of not really having the tools to do it, to be honest.
Commissioner Dan, Mr. Kendricks. Uh, again, Councilman Jenkins' word for, I would concur with your recommendation to have regularly scheduled with the state highway and the county. In a, in a, in a galaxy, long, 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 long ago, I, I did work on the planning side in the public sector, and admittedly, state highway can be difficult, but that's just what it is. But I have also learned that if you don't engage with them, you don't raise your hand, you don't talk to them, they will not pay attention to you. So I would urge us to make it professional, but that we have a daily, not daily, but we have a strong dialogue with the state, because we have a lot at stake here right now. And I would just go back to what the planning ordinance says, in the very, very beginning, one ninety-one, with the purpose of the zoning ordinance is the health, safety, and welfare. And to me, that drives everything, so I would just concur with your recommendation. So that's one council member.
So if the recommendation were to be picked up, and I would think it'd be the council that would drive this, it would require a commitment of, I guess, an individual or committee or something to make sure that there's this regular communication.
The town is.
With the town manager?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Anybody else have other questions, comments to bring up? Anybody online have any questions or comments to bring up? Well, Mr. Kendricks, thank you very much for a very detailed presentation, thank you. Hope your drive home is better than it was.
But I am lying to speak in six, five, one, one, so that would be better.
Okay, um, this is a joint meeting, so I would ask the council if there's any other items that the council feels need to be brought up at this meeting?
Seeing what the hour is, I will refrain from adding anything else.
So then I'll ask the commissioner, anything else to be brought up for the good of this hearing none, and with no objection, I call for adjournment at eight, seven fifty-one. Thank you all very much for.
And thank you for all online, too, especially the county, really appreciate your interaction.